Everybody, please rise. We'll salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Flot, please call a roll.
Mr. Nada?
Here.
Mayor Simearis?
Yeah.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Howie?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin. Six shears, one absent.
All right, first lot of business is special lot of business. Spotlight and excellence? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, yes. I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Desmond to share with you tonight as a special project by some of our Lowell High School students.
Thank you. This project was a project that was completed in Jessica Lander's class at Lowell High School. And the result of this project was a published book by her students entitled, "We Are America." And I'm going to ask Ms. Lander to come on up to the podium to give us a little more information about this wonderful project.
Thank you so much. We're really excited to share with you our new book, "We Are America." And mostly, I'm just going to turn this over to my students here. We brought a contingent of the 28 authors from our Lowell High Seminar on American Diversity. But basically, the course is looking at the history of diversity, the history of social justice in this country. And specifically, this book was trying to tie together each individual student's personal stories and connect that to the greater history of American diversity. But I think it's best said through my students, so I'll let them tell you more about the book. But thank you so much for inviting us here.
Good evening. I would like to thank you guys for giving us the time to speak to you. It means a lot personally to me, and I'm sure it means a lot to the class. During the semester, we took this class called Seminar on American Diversity, where the main project was a collection of each student's own personal stories, which we found to define who we are. Over the semester, we learned about several landmark Supreme Court cases. We learned about the long struggle for civil rights. We learned about the suffrage movement. We learned about the fight for LGBTQ rights. And we've learned that, at times, the United States isn't the most accepting place. However, we also know that in the United States, there are places like Lowell, whose diversity is quite literally what the city is known for, besides the mills. So we decided to show that. We have stories from a person whose first week of school here had a tragic accident, but survived and re-found her religious belief. We have a story from someone who had to fight to be able to wear a hijab at her JRC, J-O, J-R-C-C? Yes, great. Sorry. I'm currently not in that. But she had to write six letters from six different people just to be able to wear it, and she's the first Lowell High School student to be able to. We have a story of a girl who lost her passion for art, considering thinking about how she's going to be judged for it. How her struggles and her support from her peers allowed her to refine that passion. We have a story of someone who's known diversity their whole life and has taken it for granted, who didn't really realize how different it truly was until we took that trip to Montgomery, Alabama. Which we are appreciating you guys giving us the opportunity to do that. I know personally, it changed that student's life, changed how they view things. So I'm going to turn the mic over to another student named Lucy, who's going to describe the process of creating the book.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Lucy Rakabuba, a senior from Lowell High School. As Phyllie said, I will talk about the process of writing the book. We knew that, in order for us to write our stories and share them, we had to learn and listen from other people's stories. We listened to Moth's stories, which are stories that are told by people from all across America. These stories are personal and true. We, sorry. We listened to these stories in order for us to get ideas of what to write, and we also knew that these stories will be very important. These stories were... Sorry.
You're doing fine.
I'm sorry.
Apologize for that.
In order for... Sorry. We knew that these stories, we would not get these stories perfectly in the right, in the first try, so we spent every day after school, before school, and during school editing. We each edited about 15 to 20 times. We knew that, we know that everybody's, every story is very important. And for me personally, I felt like, for me sharing my story was very, it made me feel very important, in that I mattered, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ezekiel Nunez, and I'm going to explain the reason why we wrote this book. The reason behind this book is to teach about American diversity. And we think Lowell is a great example of that. See, Lowell is an amazing city with so many different cultures, backgrounds, religions, and beliefs. But what worries us is the growing intolerance that we see all over the country and all over the world. We just had a massacre last week in a mosque in New Zealand. And now more than ever, we think it's extremely important that we teach about diversity all over the world. We hope to share this book with different schools in Lowell, but not only in Lowell, also across Massachusetts and across the country. Again, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present our work to you. It really means a lot to us, and we hope to keep working together. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Could all of our students who are here, could they stand for, to be recognized at least? It'd be wonderful, along with your teacher. Thank you all.
And then we actually, we brought copies of the book for each of the members of the committee. And so Carla, do you have those copies? And we can give those to...
Could we have them come behind the rail to have a picture with the school committee? Because this is very impressive, and we really admire your work and their work, so thank you for what you've done. So the students would come behind the rail and...
We'll take a picture. Fantastic.
First of all, I would like to congratulate all these students. I was fortunate enough, about three or four weeks ago, to have quite a few of them in on a Saturday morning to talk about the book. And I had it, they were kind enough to give me a copy. And there's stories in there for everybody facing everything. One of the stories, one of the students we had in, the young girl talked about how she never knew her father until she reached a certain age and she met him for the first time, and what that experience was like. And these are all, all of these stories are based on these students' experiences. And this young man was a great salesman that day, and so I just want him to be able to tell everybody where the book is available in case they want to get it, because you've got to sell, sell, sell. Thank you for the information.
The book is available at the 1826 School Store located at 151 Merrimack Street. The hours are from 11:00 to 4:00, and the books are $10 each. Thank you.
The thing is, have you contacted some of the other agencies? Because I think when they have some of their galas or whatever, this would be something that I think a lot of people would like to see and buy, so. Maybe you can call my office tomorrow, and we could figure out with our secretary how to set up some discussion, okay? Have your teacher call.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, we're all set. Anything else?
Thank you for your time.
I guess now back to work, okay? We have a public hearing. We had the good... Can we go home from here? No. We have a public hearing regarding inter-district school choice program. I'd like, anyone who wants to speak in favor of the inter-district school choice program, the hearing's open. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Anyone who wants to speak in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? 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 That portion is closed. We will have a vote at 9:01, and a discussion if that is necessary. Okay, thank you. That hearing is closed. And now we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting of the Lowell School Committee of Wednesday, March 6, 2019. I need a motion to accept the place of file by Mr. Howie, second by Ms. Doherty. All in favor? Thank you. Now we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, if the committee has any questions relative to any of the items, we can speak to that.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes, I just did, I have one question about the Notre Dame Training School. It mentioned something about third-party, non-public services to St. Patrick's School. I'm just wondering what that means.
So as part of a requirement of our Title I funds, we provide a portion of our funding to all of our parochial schools. That's, that's part of the regulations. And so this is for the services for that particular school.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware of that, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Dakota, thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Mayor Simearis?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Six shears, one absent, approved.
Next, we have Memorial, sorry to see this, Mr. Larry Hickey, Constable for the Lowell School Committee. Please dock in the chambers. Thank you. Next, we have motions. First motion is by Ms. Doherty, requesting superintendent to provide the committee with a report that examines salary trends in Lowell Public Schools over the last five years, and how we compare with similar and nearby school districts in Mass. I need a second. May I, Mr. Howie? Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I recognize we have other, more pressing issues at hand, like getting the budget ready, and this by no means, means to take precedence over that. But I think it would be interesting to kind of get a look at how our salary trends compare, and, and just a little bit more information about that. That was my intention with this report. Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. Next, another motion by Ms. Doherty, requesting superintendent to provide the committee with an updated report on the dual enrollment program, include number of students involved with UML and MCC courses offered at Lowell High School and at the college, and other pertinent information about that program. I need a second. From Mr. Nada? Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you again, it's pretty much self-explanatory. Just looking to get an update, so we are informed about this great program that we have. And I had a parent ask me if the classes are all conducted at the colleges, if they're here, and I didn't know the answer, so that's one of the pieces I'm looking for. Thank you.
All in favor? All right, next, we have reports of the superintendent. First is Project Learn update, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this is a report regarding all of the recent funding and opportunities that have been provided through the great partnership and the support of Project Learn. I have Elsie Nun here, the executive director, just to share with you a few of the updates.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Durkin, mayor, and school committee members. We're delighted to be here. And this is not an exhaustive list, this is just meant to be, you know, a snapshot of the work we're doing. And we wanted to share it with you, actually Superintendent Durkin suggested this at our Project Learn board meeting last week, just to show you, you know, sort of where we are at this point in the year and things we're working on. So I just showed this first slide because this just is a, kind of, our way of sharing with you the strategic priorities for the year for Project Learn. Priority number one is college and career readiness, and really supporting Lowell High's efforts to expand internship and career pathway programs. We've made good progress on that, and I'll share that a little bit with you later in the presentation. And we've raised over $63,500 for those, those activities. The second piece is really to do with a new program that we'll be launching this year related to arts and STEAM education. We had one generous funder who has provided the starting point, a quarter-million-dollar endowment effort, so that we can do sort of STEM and STEAM and creative placemaking work with our students. We're very excited to be launching a pilot program this spring on June 11. They will be in Jack Kerouac Park, and it will be coinciding with our summer kickoff to summer reading, the Summer Book Fest event on June 11 from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. But we so far have about seven different schools involved in this project, and over 1,000 students will be taking part in creating colorful flags. And we're calling the project Jack's Flags, because it will be in Kerouac Park. But we hope to do a lot more programming like this and have some additional pending grants. And kicking off the next piece, STEAM and Idea Camp.
Sorry.
That's okay, we're rolling along with it. This year, we're really excited, due to some private funders, to have secured over $35,000 year-to-date for Idea Camp for this summer. And we have about 12,500 left to raise. We're going like strong. And this is thanks to an amazing partnership between our central office and Ms. Desmond's team over in curriculum, as well as UMass Lowell, and private funders like Verizon and Circle Health, new grants we've received. So we have one more we're excited to announce shortly, but it hasn't been totally, it's not, it's not ready for public announcement. So the next slide is just a quick recap on...
It's freezing on us, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay, well, I can roll with that. It's about the Girls Who Code program. This last year, Cronos, Cronos Company approached us and said, would you submit an application? And there was a program that the schools wanted to launch around providing girls real hands-on coding experience. Nationally, we know that there's a gender gap with STEM, and particularly with computer science, only one in five graduates of computer science programs is a, is a female. And that's a big gap, and we have a long way to go, because especially as Lowell's attracting more and more tech businesses, it's an exciting opportunity. So we devised this program with Girls Who Code, which is a national organization, and they have free, open-source software. But we did need funding in order to pay our Lowell teachers for after-school to be able to provide this programming. So as of year-to-date, 177 girls have participated in this program. About 13 of them went over to Cronos yesterday and told them how excited they are. And if you look at our Facebook page, you can see some photos of them checking out the game room, very techie, which is super fun. But it's really thanks in part to three funders, Cronos, Eastern Bank, and the Women Working Wonders Fund of the Greater Lowell Community Foundation. So more to come on that, but that's just a fun little program. Next up is an effort with Lowell High, really, there's so many opportunities with nine career pathways at Lowell High School. And more and more opportunities, I think every month practically, with how we can develop connections between our students and the workforce. So this year, we had a special state grant, thanks to Representative Golden and his team, and our partners, like the Secretary of Education, who really supported this idea to expand career pathways and also internships. So year-to-date, and I brought our amazing, outstanding student from this program, Lowell High has increased the internships for the career pathways program. Actually, it's, it's closer to 85 to 90% for the number of student participants. Over, actually, the, the number of businesses participating is up by 96%. We've almost doubled the number of businesses supporting this program. And we happen to be hosting at Project Learn two interns, one of, they're both outstanding, super talented, so this is a note to businesses, if you hope to grow your workforce, contact Lowell High School. And I just want to let Elizabeth speak to her experience really quickly.
Hi, so I started interning at Project Learn about a month ago. And since I've been there, I've learned a couple valuable skills. Most of all, I think I've learned event planning, which I think is really versatile, it can help me in really whatever path it can go, whether it's sitting on meetings, or even yesterday, I was put in charge of brainstorming a fundraiser and presenting it to one of their board meetings. And that's just one of the many skills that I've learned there. And it's only been a month there so far, and I can't wait to see where it brings me and the connections that I'll make from it, and the skills that I'll learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. You're one of the many incredibly talented students we're lucky enough to work with, so thank you. What's been also exciting about this work is we've been able to expand our partnership with the state. Desi and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has really put a focus on career pathway programs and having career pathway designations. So we just applied to have a state designation for our environmental sustainability pathway and our health and bioscience pathway, really fueling, you know, sort of that additional partnership between workforce and school and career readiness. So that was very exciting. We had a session for the folks interested, students interested in the trades, where 50 seniors attended. So it's been, it's been really exciting work. Just quickly, the Lowell Loves to Learn Book Notes program, we've delivered over 22,000 books to Lowell kids since the program started about 20 months ago. And we're having our kickoff to summer reading, and you see the little flags there, because that's going to be the, the little art, art launch. And I should mention, the Art Up program is a partnership with Lowell Community Health Center in expanding their incredible work in bringing local arts. The next slide, just really quickly, you all know about this, so I won't dwell on it, but the Citywide Family Council has launched, as well as a wonderful student voice group at Lowell High School with the Your Voice Matters program. And we have over 200 parents who've been engaged in monthly meetings and forums, and a 22-person leadership team with the Your Voice Matters and the Citywide Family Council. The student group, Voice Group, head of school, Bastide, has done an incredible job with 44 participants in three focus areas of the school, including mental health and suicide prevention. Such a critical, really critical topic, and the students are passionate about helping each other. And the last thing is really an invitation. On April 24, we're really lucky, speaking of Lowell High School and incredible graduates and alumni, to have the president of UMass Lowell, Marty Meehan, and as well as Congresswoman Lori Trahan, join us for an evening with our students to really focus on celebrating. It's called Learn Today, Lead Tomorrow. It's a special event, April 24. It's over at Crosspoint Towers, it starts at 5:30 p.m. We'd love to see you all there. And we're excited to actually, the, the best speakers of the night, the really, the featured participants are our students. We're going to have career pathway students, and they take the show. So just wanted to make sure all the public was invited, and you all are really special participants and partners in all of this work. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Elsie. I, I think the public should know that, I don't know of any other school system that has a public-private partnership like this, and want to thank you for the work that you're doing. And just remind everybody that President Meehan and Congresswoman Lori Trahan, both students, graduates of Lowell High School, and they have class offices. These are our products, but thank you for this work. Any comments? There were students at Lowell High School when you were the headmaster. We won't get into that, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. No wage thing, Mr. Dakota, okay? Next, we have response to Dominic Lay's, our school committee member Lay's motion on April 4, 2018 regarding the feasibility of offering MTAL workshops, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So with us tonight, we have our facilitator of our Lowell Teacher Academy, Pina Maggio, and she can share with you, because she's the one who developed this plan, and we're really grateful for her efforts.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of all of us. This is a, we're very excited about this proposal. Dominic and I have had conversations about the need to diversify our teaching staff. And we well recognize that there is a need. And at the same time, we have around us, within the system and external in the system and within the city, a wonderful resource of individuals who wish to become teachers. And this really began with our paraprofessional population. We did a survey to find out how many of our paraprofessionals had degrees, and how many of them would like to become teachers. And we were surprised to find out that out of the 400-plus, we have at least 150 who have degrees and who aspire to be teachers. So the question is, how do we, how do we help these, and support these individuals, homegrown individuals right here in Lowell, to become teachers? So we decided that we would offer a, the, the process and protocol for becoming a teacher can be daunting and very intimidating. So where does one begin? Well, first of all, there are many tests that have to be taken. There are some tests that are basic to any, if you want to be a math teacher or a phys ed teacher, you need to take what is called a Communication and Literacy, MTAL. And that is about literacy, reading and writing. And taking that test is not only, you not only bring the skills of reading and writing, but you also need to know test-taking techniques, as we know, because we teach our children that when they do the MCAS. So we are very fortunate to have a wonderful teacher at the high school, Ari Sullivan, who has experience in this. And so she created a workshop for our paraprofessionals, which helps them to prepare for the test. Not only practice in doing it, but also giving test-taking techniques, and basically instilling in them confidence that they can do it. Right? So when we heard about the motion that Dominic proposed, we talked about, and we said, whoa, we can do this, because we're offering it to our paraprofessionals, why can't we not offer it to the, to the public at large? And that's exactly what this proposal is about. We talked about the logistics of it, we talked about how we would do it, it's going to be very similar to... It's going to be very similar to the, to the program they were offering to our paraprofessionals. And we are very excited and looking for your support in proposing this and implementing this. And I just want to add that this is a really small step, because the process of becoming a teacher, as I said, can be arduous, but it involves more than just taking one test. And we would like to welcome the individuals in our community, as we have the paraprofessionals, to engage with us and to help, allow us to help them by taking part in the workshop. But that's only the first step. There are so many areas that we can support them with. And as the director of the Lowell Teacher Academy and on behalf of the wonderful people of administration, we're really eager to do that, because there's nothing better than to have a homegrown faculty. So we look forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Maggio. So as I understand, this is work in progress, and we don't have any specific days when we can start the program?
We haven't determined, but we have a program, and we're determined, we have to decide how we're going to advertise it. That's really important, right? Through notices, taking home with children at school, through our various community organizations. The workshop is ready to go. We just need the participants, and that's what we have to work on, is going out there and selling our wares, if you will. And we will do that.
I understand they have to, we have to pay, they have to pay...
It's a nominal fee, which we charge, it's $100, which we charge.
Very affordable.
Very, very affordable. And we're setting up a mechanism by which the individuals may pay for it through credit card or check or cash or whatever it is. And it's through that funding that the instructor will be paid. So we, those, I think the logistics of it, in terms of offering it, we're offering it at the high school. The most important thing is that we have people coming, and that's, that's what we're really working on right now.
Okay. So can we now advertise and say, register to take the course or not yet?
We're sure, we're ready to the extent that I think we have to, there are legal issues that may be involved, and they were brought up when, when we discussed this. So we would, I think at this point, we would like to get advice from the attorney to make sure that the literature is satisfactory within the means of what it needs to say and read and doesn't offend anyone. So I think once we have that ironed out, we certainly will be ready to advertise it, absolutely.
Okay, so we still have one more step to go before we advertise?
I think of it as a small step, yes.
Very small, okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Maggio and Superintendent. I know you, and Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, I know you've all been working on it for a very long time. So thank you very much, and I think the public is going to enjoy taking the course, I hope.
We do too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Maggio. There's a lot of work involved with that. And I, I've always contended that many of the colleagues that I've worked with over the years that have come to teaching profession from private sector make some of the best teachers ever. They really do, and I think that's a wonderful project to have to go out and try to reach out to these people and offer this to them, where we can, where we can reap the benefits of all their experience that they can bring to our classroom and to our kids. It's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How would this work with college students who are on that pathway to become teachers or who are just starting? Would this benefit them in getting them ready for future testing? Or is this just, are we just looking at...
Certainly, it would be open to any and all residents, whether they're college students, they're housewives, they want to change in career. But I think that those individuals who are in college, enrolled in a program and wish to become teachers, much of what we're offering is going to be offered within the program. Right? We would certainly be able, if someone wished to take the workshop in addition to what they're doing at the college level, we would welcome them, of course. Okay?
Any further discussion? Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
Ms. Desmond?
I just want to mention, Mr. Nader, you are correct. There are students that are interested in pursuing graduate degrees, and a lot of educational program, programming will not accept students until they've passed the MTAL. So I would envision that if someone receives a bachelor's degree and is interested in a master's program in education, that this would be something that would be appealing perhaps to that student.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a final question is, so when, when it is ready, would the superintendent bring this back to the, to the meeting, to the floor one more time when it's ready?
Sure, we can do that. We can provide the, the literature that we're going to share, the advertisements and how we're going to get the word out. So it would be, it would be a good idea for us to, to bring it forward so that the public can hear the scheduled dates and times.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Maggio. Oh, Ms., sorry.
All set, Mr. Lay.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
I'm just wondering if we need a vote tonight to move forward? Would that be necessary, or you want to wait? Okay.
You don't need to. I don't know why, I mean, it's an ongoing program, so. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And you're going to have a vote as a report of progress anyway. Next, we have the Department of Labor Standard Report. I believe we have a speaker.
Paul Georges.
Hello, my name's Susan Yuvani, 234 Nesmith Street, Lowell. I am here to express Mr. Georges' regrets. He was called out to another meeting. He would like to have the opportunity to speak at this, about this at another time.
Fine, thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share with the committee for your information the, the findings that were provided to the city manager late January relative to the Department of Labor Standards Report around our facilities. And in addition, you'll also see a response from the city manager and her team on February 28, 2019. Since the, the report was submitted, we also had a meeting together on March 14, the city manager, several members of her team, and myself and representatives of the Department of Labor Standards to review those findings, to also review all the progress to date and determine next steps. So the three areas that, at the end of that discussion that will be provided to the state are the alarm system protocol that is now functioning for, it's a system that provides alerts when the heating system goes out, preventative maintenance calendar and a tracking mechanism that the city is going to provide, and the EMG and Boston Mechanical Reports.
Any further, Mr. Dakota?
I have a question for the head of school. As far as you know, are there still any areas in the high school that have heating issues?
We had some issues in the freshman academy. We still have a few issues over there. I was just checking with Kristen. I know they were dealing with that the last couple of days. But as far as I know, that's it, except for the media center. That's still cold, and the head of school conference room.
Okay, and the media center involves a lab that has no heat?
Yes.
Are there kids going into that room on a regular basis?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
With sweaters and heavy sweaters on.
So the city hasn't addressed that? We're actually putting kids in that room?
They're, they're working on it, but it has not been fixed yet. But they are working on it. The, in terms of the freshman academy, we have somebody there almost every day working on things. So I know that that's happening in terms of the media center. I know they're working on that as well, but it has not been fixed yet.
Do we know what's holding up the issue with that lab?
Madam Superintendent?
Oh, yes.
I do know that there are parts ordered, and to my understanding, I'm not the technical heating, I'm learning, but there, there's a component that actually needs to be rebuilt. So that is on order.
I'm just, you know, this has been a couple of months since this was produced, and so taking that long to get a part, I'm concerned about that. I'm just saying, you know, is there any way to get this expedited? I mean, we're into March, we're almost into April.
For the, for the record, I mean, everything that could be expedited has been. I mean, the city manager, what she's been faced with is years of neglect. I mean, people fail to realize, what are you talking about, years of neglect?
Oh, yeah.
And now there's an answer for immediacy at this particular point. But the thing is, some of the pieces of equipment, because I know personally, are so, in such condition, yes, you can repair this, but by repairing this end, it creates more pressure on the other side.
Right.
There's a breakdown. But the thing is, there is an immediacy with the city manager, working with the city, with the superintendent to address.
Oh, I'm aware of that.
I know, you're right. I mean, but the thing is, your questions are germane. I mean, they're right. I mean, because people don't understand it. Let me ask you this, when they go into the, are there any other places they can go? Or do they have to go to that particular lab?
In terms of the media lab, they do have another place they can go, but when they're working on that equipment, they have to be in that room. We were in there on Friday, and it's chilly in there. But I will have to say that compared to last year, where we were last year, I just have to put it out there, we are in such a better place than we were last year. We had rooms upon rooms upon rooms, I think everybody remembers. So relatively speaking, we have made tremendous, the city's made tremendous progress. And I think that we're all very grateful for that, but we still have a little bit left. The freshman academy is sort of an off-and-on thing. They're still, they're working over there practically every day, trying to make sure it's up to snuff.
It's a much older system, but let me ask you this. Have you looked into the city purchasing some type of portable heating equipment? Not people bringing something in from Walmart, I'm talking about heavy-duty?
Like the heaters that are in the main office area, those portable ones up on the wall. We did purchase some small heaters that didn't seem to help too, too much. We sent them up there, and they weren't big enough. So we need to relook at that, relook at putting something more heavy-duty in there.
Okay. Madam Superintendent, if you can just check on that, that aspect.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Now, next we have the business office update. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, I'd ask Assistant Superintendent Ms. Turner to share with you the updates for this evening.
The business office update includes an update on bad bills, human resource update, and a miscellaneous follow-up. In your packet, on attachment one, you'll see that, that, the original submission of bad bills to the city. It's approximately $255,000 worth of bills that were from last year that were either paid or need to be paid with this year's money. To collaborate, we have to build trust with each other. So I share all of my drafts with the city CFO with the request for him to let me know if this is sufficient or if this is allowable. Attachment two shows the law that I read that states that payroll, that no bill or payroll shall be approved for payment without city council authorization. So the spreadsheet includes Article 16 payments, which are, that's a liability from last year that we had to pay in the fall of this year. It includes paid and non-paid items. We wanted to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. We put all bills on there, even those that were mistakenly paid without the city council's authorization, to make sure that we are building credibility and, you know, doing everything the right way. We also did it, well, we actually prepared this spreadsheet for two reasons. We wanted to be transparent, but we also did want to request a reimbursement if possible. The reimbursement was based upon an early comment at one of the city council meetings where they indicated that there was approximately $80,000 left in school department accounts. And we were asked if we had a surplus. We didn't, because we had unpaid bills. When I would, when I emailed the CFO and the auditor to request those funds to help pay for these bills that we had accumulating at the school department, they stated that it flows into free cash. Free cash has to be certified. So the process would be to wait until free cash was certified, and then we could request formally from the city council to get those funds. They did notify me late in the year that free cash had been certified. We were still being contacted by various vendors that hadn't been paid. So we continued to let the list grow. I submitted this spreadsheet to the city CFO with all of these items for, you know, a vote or for input, so that we can get a vote from the city council. On 2/25/19, after discussion between me and the CFO, he stated that he would research and clarify whether or not we should include the payroll and paid bills, that you can see on attachment two. After he researched, he found out that we should not include payroll and the paid bills. So we have eliminated those from the spreadsheet. The outstanding balances on unpaid bills at this time would be approximately $80,000. Ironically, that's the amount that was in, you know, a surplus. So we need to decide, I have to, I have to certify these bills, by the way, just so you know. I have to certify, to the best of my knowledge, whether these goods and services were received. So that took a little bit of investigating, so that I didn't have to blindly certify. I will work with the CFO now to prepare a certification letter, and we have to decide whether we want to request funds for the remaining $80,000 or if we want to just proceed with getting authorization to pay on our, pay.
Ms. Doherty?
Just to, just to make sure I understand. So there's $80,000 outstanding in these bad bills that hasn't been paid. The, the amount that has been paid, do we have to get the school, the city council's approval on those as well? You're just separating it out, but they need to approve the ones we have paid or just the ones we haven't?
Well, based upon Chapter 44, Section 64, it states in here, "No bill or payroll shall be approved for payment." And it continues on to say, "Without city council vote, you cannot pay a previous year's liability with current year funds." And it says, "No bill or payroll." But I am not a lawyer. I thought that meant we had to include all items. And I did include the items that we had already paid, just for transparency. And even though it would be after the fact, I thought that we would, it would be in our best interest to still get them to, to know that it happened and to authorize the payments. But based on the CFO's research, he said that it's not necessary. We don't have to do that, so we only have to list the $80,000.
You're talking about fixed costs versus, you know, buying supplies and that type of thing. And that has to be certified, because did we receive the services or did we receive?
But they've now all been certified, and we know that we owe $80,000 still of, in bad bills that haven't been paid. So I would recommend that we bring that before the city council and ask that they use the $80,000 surplus that we had at the end of the year when we didn't know what all our outstanding bills were, to pay that remaining $80,000. That would be how I think we should go forward.
But is that, in fact, the remaining, there's more, is it, I mean?
After we, after we modified the spreadsheet reflecting the research that the CFO did, we did remove the Article 16 payment and the payroll type of cost, like, you know, contract type of cost. And we did remove the items that were paid. So it's, it's over $80,000, but, you know, $84,000, we just got another bill, and I added it to the spreadsheet. But it's approximately $84,000 that's not paid that we can submit.
That's a process, because there'll be, I believe there are other bills outstanding. They, just identifying them at this particular point.
If I could just, just add to what I, I think that, you know, we've had such a difficult budget year. And we lost that $550,000 from the grant that was written out, came to the city in February of 2018. We never saw that money. I think this $80,000 is a minimum that we should get back to help cover these bills.
Bad bills will be covered.
I, I would put that in the form of a motion, ask if you could bring that to the city council.
That's a process. That's, that's going to happen anyways. We don't have to do that. Why, why, why make a motion? I mean, that's, she's working with the CFO to, and that's going to be brought in, and they will be paid. It's then the city, it has to be brought before the city council, and the council will address that issue.
So what's the process for getting... So what's the process for getting the grant money that the city didn't pass on to the schools?
That's, that's another issue, and that's another response.
Because we, I mean, I made a motion asking for that money, too.
But the thing is, you've got your response, there was a, Ms. Palillo, do you want to talk about that, the response at this point regarding that, that sum?
To clarify, just to clarify, when I did speak with the CFO, he did indicate that they, these are two separate items, that one is to have them authorized, and two, to request payment is a whole separate, that's another, so they're two separate things. He did clarify that.
But I believe Mr. Nutter has been working on that also with the subcommittee, Mr. Nutter?
No. Wow, there we go. No, no, not at all. We haven't even addressed the bad bills. We, you know.
I, I thought in conversation, that was going to be something that you wanted to address.
We, we haven't even got to that. We were talking about budgets, but I, I believe the process has, has been outlined, is they have to formally submit these bills and ask if they can be paid, and then I believe the CFO will have to write up a formal motion to submit to the city council to authorize the payment. As far as the grant money that you mentioned, I believe the response we got was that that was rolled into, it was not claimed by the past administration.
In the proper time.
In, in the, in the timeframe, so therefore it rolls into free cash and is no longer available to us. I mean, the city get back only 2.9, I know it sounds like I'm saying only, but 2.5 million dollars, and 2 million of that had to be turned back into the stabilization fund. So there's not, the city, the city is operating on about a tight-as-budget as we are. And I, I don't think people understand that they are running as tight as, as we are.
No, the city manager has inherited a situation where, when we talk about the budget, it's a different type of situation that we encountered in the school department, but the, but the issue is, we're talking about tight monies, she's not filled many positions, okay, that have been discussed by the city council as to why they were not filled, and what she's doing to keep the budget operational, she's made her own cuts during, during the year. So it's not like there's a magic sum of money somewhere that's being hidden. But the thing is, if anyone's going to work with the superintendent is the city manager. And the thing is, that's why I've also asked Mr. Nutter as chair of the finance committee to be working as much, as well as they can with our finance committee. But I'll also be making a report regarding my, I have a report coming in from the city auditor, and we're going to be talking about procedures that will be set up, working with Ms. Turner and our auditor, which will give this school committee ongoing information, and, and the issue is, we're going to set up the parameters for being able to have real oversight on the budget, because that's what we've talked about, that's what we have to do, that's what we're responsible to do. So there's a lot going on, and there's a willingness on the city side to do this, but we're talking about years of whatever, and this is coming together at a time, and so I think everybody has to be as conscious about it as possible, but also, you know, accepting of some of the things. Ms. Doherty, then Mr. Nutter.
I just want to make this comment, I realize that the city is not rolling in dough either, but the reality is, that was a grant, and those were matching funds that belonged to the schools, and your honor knows, we could use that money, $550,000, and I understand, if the prior administration didn't ask for it in time, you know, the city had to have known that it was $550,000 that belonged to the schools, and it was spent in some other way. And as an advocate for the schools, I just feel compelled to say that. I understand, we need to work together, we talked about that in the budget meeting, we need to collaborate, we want to work together, but I'm advocating for the education of our children, which I think is essential to the city's success. And that needs to be said, that's all.
Okay, has to be said, but at the same time, that was done, in other words, there's no, oh, way, there was really no way of identifying, it was money that came in, it wasn't requested, whatever the procedure was, it wasn't by that year. The money's gone, the money's not there anymore. That's the issue. But the thing is, what I've talked about, and what I've asked Mr. Nutter, the subcommittee in finance, looking at, you know, cooperation, cooperative efforts, but I'm also looking at having the auditor work with Ms. Turner to really identify what is ours, so these things don't happen. The thing is, if the city manager could give that money back now, she would. She doesn't have it, I'm sorry, she doesn't have it, so we can, you know, have the nation of teeth, or whatever. But the thing is, let's be realistic, we should work together, because there's an effort, we have an administration that's willing, all administrations have been, but the thing, but, but the issue is, this city manager is trying to put a series of operations in place that will not allow what we've had happen again. And as I've said, I have a report that will be coming from the city auditor, I've seen some of the preliminary steps that he's put in, and I'm pleased with what I see, because it allows the CFO, our CFO, and the city auditor to look at and discuss, okay, what things should be looked at, what are the bellwethers that if it comes to the school, city, city side, that it's respected, and there's, and there's a communication between the two immediately of, this has to be done in a timely manner, this has to, but those things were not in, in place. Mr. Nutter?
If we could, Ms. Turner, you know, you've identified the amount that still needs to be paid. If you could provide us also, in the report, of what was already paid, and I think I spoke to you about one line item in particular, that I think that we have to find a way to, to pay that ourselves, but we still need to, to get the approval. And in case you're wondering, one of the outstanding bills that was never paid was one that the prior school committee, when they hired a law firm to seek to have a say in the, you know, placement of the high school, I don't think the city's going to be willing to pay that bill. That's one we're going to have to pay ourselves.
Any further discussion? Ms. Turner?
That was part of the problem with the bad bills. For me to certify without just blindly certifying, I would, sometimes you'd get an invoice, but you didn't know where it came from, it wouldn't have backup, or there would be a purchase order with someone calling, so I had to dig and search, and, you know, things like that. And for instance, the example that you're using, I wouldn't have known what that lawsuit was, so I, I thank you for that. I also wanted to say, we will collaborate. We had our first city finance meeting for the first time today in many months. The CFO, the auditor, every finance head was there, so we're going to have those meetings regularly, and I will always ask for the money, so that will happen. The next update is the HR update, and I listed in the packet the initial compendium, which is when we list all of our open positions. That stays open, the original deadline was March 22nd, but we did extend that seven days. Teachers get to move around and, you know, transfer into different positions, so compendium two will be all of the newly opened positions at that time, once people fall into their places. The second piece of the HR update is, we have a few applicants, that we, we have a screening committee, we're going to reach out to people tomorrow, to see if the end of March and early April is good to begin the interview process for the direct, what is it, Chief Human Resource Officer. And once they go through their interview process, they would submit their finalist to the administration, our administration, so that we can decide on this position. Any questions?
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Through you, Ms. Turner, are these lists opening? They are pending, but not, not yet fulfilled, right?
They may have been, this was the initial list that was posted.
Okay, okay.
But now, since then, they could have been, one of these could be posted and filled the same day, if one of the teachers wanted in.
No, the reason I ask is because I noticed, I just got in and saw a Lowell High School foreign language, my teachers, there are two positions which was already filled.
Yes.
So, so, so these positions not necessarily been, is, I mean, not yet filled.
Right, they might, they may have been already filled. These right here may have already been filled, because when I prepared this report, it was showing you the first compendium, but teachers may have already placed, you know, there may have already been placement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The next item is a miscellaneous follow-up. The Lowell High School task force, we were asked to review the equity and whether or not the amounts were adequate for the stipends, for the Lowell High School activity stipends. We met as a team, and we found that, we did a project where we asked each of the, the program heads or the club, the head of the club, to tell how many hours they spend per week, how many students are participating in the, the organ, the club, and we found that despite some of the clubs having just as much participation and many, many, you know, time demands, they weren't, the stipends weren't equitable. So we are going to submit a request to you to modify that. There were some stipends that did not grow annually as the rest did, so we're going to bring that to your attention, we're modifying something, we're going to come back together as the task force to finalize it, and then submit it to you for approval. And the next update was on the unaffiliated raises. I did find the minutes that approved this, it was February 14th of 2018, the raise was approved for the not, the unaffiliated staff to get the same raise as the unions, and that raise would start July 2017 until June of 2020, so we're currently processing those raises now for the non-affiliated staff. And, any questions on that one before I?
Ms. Doherty?
Did you say July of 2017? It goes back that far?
That's when you got, you approved it, but where?
I thought we approved it in February of 2018.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, I'm going back, I'm thinking of the contract, yes, 2/14/18. It did not, that was what we had to clarify, whether or not it was retroactive. It was voted then, but the language states July of 2017, but there weren't, I didn't see any retroactive payments. So we're researching that, but that's all being reviewed and processed, and we're going through the auditor's office to ask them, because they have the minutes and clarification. But it is confusing, because the vote stated all three years. And the retirement workshops, we conducted our first retirement workshop, there were over 45 people there, there wasn't a seat available, they were, they enjoyed it, so we have a second one for, on March 27th, and we already have 27 people come into that, so these are working out well. Anything else? I mean, any questions?
Thank you. Next, we have 2019 graduation date Lowell High School commencement speaker, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is self-explanatory, but it's important for you to note those important dates for Lowell High School and adult education graduations, and the commencement speaker.
Thank you. Enrollment figures.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that Brian Chapman, who is the commencement speaker, is a Lowell High School graduate of the wonderful, spectacular, heavily-involved class of 1980, which I happen, just happened to be a fellow member of, and I also pointed out to him the other day, that it took a representative from Seneville to be elected, to have back-to-back years to have commencement speakers from Seneville, Tom Golden and Brian Chapman, so it's a good thing.
Anything else? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm afraid, all right, Mr. Dakota, be careful.
But I think another graduate is Johnny Dakota, and I'm not sure that that's going to be colorful enough, and another fellow Seneville person here, thank you, great people from that side, part of the city. Thank you.
You're talking to another Seneville person, so, okay, Seneville's very well represented, but thank, what?
But Mr. Samaras was the headmaster at that time, wasn't he?
No, actually, back then, it was Peter Stamos.
Yes, it was. I was roaming the halls at the point. Thank you. I think, okay, enrollment figures. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, these are your regular enrollment figures for your review.
Any questions? All right, next, the report, report on motions.
The updates to the report on motions, if anyone needs clarification, or if we missed something, we certainly will entertain your comments.
Mr. Nutter?
Would you just give everybody, I know we did this in the finance subcommittee meeting, but for those who missed, have an update on the maintenance of effort agreement that we have worked on so far.
Sure. So Ms. Turner and Attorney Hall, and along with our finance chair, Mr. Nutter, have drafted an agreement and a proposal. That proposal has been submitted to the city manager and her team, they are reviewing that this week, and then the plan is to schedule a meeting to discuss the proposal.
All right, thank you. So I need now a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 8-1 through 8-7, as a report of progress, I need a motion to accept by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Nutter. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have on the new business, all right, this is now the vote of the inter-district school choice, so I need a motion that the Lowell Public Schools participate in the inter-district school choice program for grades nine through 12 for the 2019-2020 school year. Also to allot but not exceed 30 seats within grade nine through 12. Need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Hoi. Any discussion? Mr. Nutter?
Do we know how many students we presently have?
It's less than 15.
Thank you.
Any further? Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, we have the food service management contract, I need a motion that the Lowell Public Schools accept the five proposals from Arimac Educational Service LLC for $44,922,703. I need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, second by, any second, by Mr. Nutter, discussion?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Again, Mayor, I'm not satisfied with this here, I think as a school committee, we should reject this recommendation of Arimac. I believe, before everything is done in the next year or so, you're going to find out that revolving account, I mean, I remember at a time when, she's not here tonight, but the lady that runs it, I won't say her name, but I know she was telling us at one time we were supposed to get 100% reimbursements, and for some reason, we never heard anything from the state that that was going to change, from that office. So I, I believe we should reject this recommendation, I think we should go back out for bids. I think now that I hear in the news that Walmart actually is going after Amazon in the food department, maybe we can go out and talk to Walmart on our own and see if they can feed our children for less money, because I think Amorak, Amorak, or whatever way you want to say their name, I believe we should look into maybe getting a lawyer and looking into suing those people for damages I think they've caused to the school system. I think they've held back information about the reimbursement, I think we're going to see it as time goes on, that they're not a, an outfit that I will vote for. Thank you for the time, I'm not going to vote for this.
Mr. Nutter?
Through you to either the assistant or the superintendent. All, all reports to be submitted for reimbursement, they come through the All reports to be submitted for reimbursement, they come through the city, through the school department, correct? We are responsible for that?
We are responsible.
We are responsible. The contract with Aramac provides us with money each year, correct? We get paid for them doing their job. And then we get reimbursed through the CEP program also. We had three people, my understanding is it were three businesses, that came to the initial bid meeting, and Aramac was the only one to submit. We followed all the procedures. I make a motion that we approve the contract.
So the motion's already in the floor. Roll call. Any further discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. How come we have not received the contract and we want to vote on something we have not? I mean, I read this and I saw written about the committee approving it. Who are the committees? And we haven't seen a contract. Are we gonna vote on something that we don't know?
Turner?
The screening committee, we had to compare, we had 17 comparative evaluation criteria, and three people on a screening committee had to evaluate and determine whether they were highly qualified and ranked highly. And they were ranked as, they were ranked as highly qualified. Aramac received a highly advantageous qualification. So they did, the committee did it. We now have to bring it to you to let you know. But you can see the contract after. We can bring a sample, I mean, or a copy if you'd like.
Sure. I do need to see the contract. I wanna see the contract. I know we should, we all should see the contract before the vote.
Basically, a proposal, the proposal for the contract.
And, I'm sorry, I still don't understand the committee. Who are the committee again?
We had one principal, an assistant business manager, and another, we had two people in the business office and a principal that all evaluated the 17 comparative evaluation criteria. And it went through the city procurement office. So the city procurement officer, he went through this whole process with us to make sure that it was done correctly according to chapter 30B.
Thank you. So I, if, with your approval, Mayor, can we see the contract?
That information will be provided, as was stated. But we have the vote tonight, though.
Regardless of approval or not, we can see the contract, right?
But you will get the information.
Thank you.
But that information will be provided.
Is it necessary, Mayor, is it necessary to vote tonight before they see the contract?
Turner?
Is it necessary? Tonight, we're voting on accepting the bid, the RFP, the submission. If you want to know this as well, there's $1.6 million expected as a return for the school department each year after the reimbursements to the cost. I would recommend voting on it tonight so that we don't violate any, you know, we have to submit this contract after we do this. We have to submit it to the Department of Ed for them to evaluate. So not only do we have the city procurement officer, the three people on the screening committee evaluate this RFP or this proposal, but now it has to go in front of the Department of Ed, or we won't get our reimbursement funding. So we have to submit it in time.
And the delay, I mean, it's like, there's no one else gonna apply at this point. This is the only applicant that we have.
Yes.
Thank you. Is this important to, Mr. Hoy?
Yeah, just wanted to add one last thing. I really do feel, and I remember it very well, actually, that the people that are running Aramac was telling us for a while or not telling us at all what the reimbursement rate was. I think we were sitting around for a few years thinking we're getting 100%, or at least for a little while, that they kept that information from us. I think this company should be looked at again. I should say, we should reject it or at least wait and go out and see if Walmart can do it. I think they might be able to do. This company here, I think we should get rid of it once and for all. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
But the issue is the responsibility of the school department with the state, with DESI, to establish those rates and set those rates. If we don't do anything now, I mean, we're putting the school system in harm's way at this point. We have followed a procedure, okay? They're the only applicant at this particular point. They have the capacity to do the job. And I can understand, we all get frustrated with certain companies, but...
Say one more thing?
Sure.
I believe that all I ever hear out of a lot of my colleagues is how bad the financial situation was or is, and it is, but this is one reason why we owe millions, because I believe this outfit wasn't doing their job. And that's why I reject it.
What is very clear was the CFO, the responsibility was the administration on setting the percentage rate. And the exorbitant percentage rate that was used, I mean, there's no one in the Aramac Valley that would not know what the rates were from DESI. That's, Ms. Doherty?
I'd just like to, what, maybe present what my understanding of it, which might help my colleague. So that percentage rate of reimbursement is based on us, the Lowell Public Schools, submitting our student demographic information to DESI, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We needed to keep our numbers up. They needed to know how many of our students were at or below the poverty level. We had to reconfirm or re-verify those numbers every year. So that slipped. We didn't stay on top of that in the prior administration. That was not Aramac's responsibility, my understanding. The second piece of it was we had this money, this revolving fund money that was based on the CEP and the poverty rates of our students, that had rules about how we could use it. And we didn't follow all those rules in the way we used that money, which is why we have to pay $2 million back to the state of Massachusetts. They're giving us four years to do it, because we did this over a couple of years with the prior administration. Again, how we spent that money had nothing to do with Aramac. From what I've observed, I think they have, the woman who runs it, I think, I can't think of her name right now, but I think that there's been a real effort to enhance the nutritional, educational aspect, and really do more than just put, you know, food in our lunchrooms. Hasn't been perfect, no. We've worked to improve the quality and the range of foods that we offer our students. But we're seeing the amount of students taking our lunches and breakfast going way up. The participation has gone way up from when my kids were having lunch years ago. So I think, you know, the fact that they were the only bidder, okay, that does kinda tie our hands. But I don't feel overall that it has been an unsatisfactory partnership. I think that it has been, for the most part, a good partnership, always looking to improve. But I have no reservations about voting to move forward with this, based on those factors.
Mr. Turner, then Mr. Nutter?
I just, I wanted to say that with all the transition that the school department is going through, I think that having the stability of maintaining the current food service program is in our best interest, because if we replaced that program with another company, we would have all the growing pains on top of all the other transitions that we're facing right now.
There's nothing outstanding I've seen that would change my vote, but there's two issues out there. Indirect costs, which the school department was responsible to take care of properly, and the identification of students, you know, for the food services. That's our responsibility. That's it. Mr. Nutter, then Mr. Hoy.
I just want to move to question.
Roll call.
Can I just, well, after all, she said I can't have one more thing.
The question's been moved.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Parliamentary procedure. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
No.
Ms. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin. Four yeas, two nays, one absent, approved.
Thank you. Next, we have budget transfer. Yep. Motion to approve the budget transfer of $13,395,059. Need a motion to accept by Mr. Dakota, second by, need a second, May, Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Okay. Next is vote to accept a grant award of $5,000 to Lincoln School from Macon. Motion to accept the grant award of $5,000 to the Lincoln School from Macon. I need a motion to accept by Mr. Hoy, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
And next, I need a motion to accept the grant award of $15,000 to Lowell High School Athletic Department and Lowell Police Department. Need a motion to accept by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Hoy. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Next, we have convention requests, Lowell High trip to Spain, Lowell High School Business Professionals of America, and Lowell High School AFJROTC. I need a motion to accept all three convention conference requests by Mr. Dakota, second by, second by Mr. Hoy. Roll call.
I think Mr. Dakota has a question.
Sorry, thank you. Much as we requested this information from our ROTC kids in the last trip that they had to take, where they were missing days of school, I don't see anything in here to list that they're missing three days of school. I, you know, I'd like to see that from them, as to what their plan is for those kids. It is, because it's not...
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Oh, all right.
We have the...
The Colonel is here, if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Thank you. Next, we have UTL, Members of United Teachers of Lowell High by Donate 21 Days, Sickley Days to Maureen Keen, STEM Academy, Rogers School, Paraprofessional. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Hoy, second by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Next, from UTL, the Members of United Teachers of Lowell High by Donate 26 Sickley Days to Patricia Teig, Daily School, Paraprofessional. Motion to accept by Mr. Nutter, second by Mr. Hoy. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent, approved.
Okay, next, we have, I need a motion to recess and to enter an executive session for the purpose of updating and consideration regards to negotiation and contract language related to principals' contracts, and updating and consideration regards to negotiation of memorandum with SEIU, of which open discussion may detrimentally affect the school committee's position and to adjourn from executive session. So I need a motion to do this by Mr. Lay, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin. Six sheyes, one absent. Motion is recessed.
We will adjourn from executive session. Thank you.